Good evening. Apologize for the delay. We're having some technical difficulties. I'd like to call to order the Coopville School District Board of Directors' regular meeting for Thursday, December 19th. Will can you turn my mic down a little? Director Sherman is not present with us this evening due to a previous family engagement, but we do have a forum tonight and will proceed with the meeting. Please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance. Just as a reminder, this meeting will be recorded and available on the district YouTube channel and website. And to adopt the meeting agenda as presented.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been moved and intended to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to read the district end acknowledgement statement and our district least event. The Coopville School stated on the ancestral lands of the Lower Tijet people. For thousands of years, post Salish tribes have stewarded these lands, waterways, plants, and animals. We pay respect to the elders, past, present, and emerging, for they hold the memories, traditions, and culture of their people across the nation. Coopville Schools are committed to educating students, staff, and the community about this long history as we honor and acknowledge the continued presence of the Swinomish Indian Tribal Community and all other indigenous peoples. The equity statement for Coopville Schools. The Coopville School District is unequivocally committed to providing a safe, equitable, and inclusive working and learning community for all, whether about race, religion, language, immigration status, culture, sexual orientation, gender identity, class, ability, or a combination of these, all students deserve to be respected for who they are and acknowledged for the strengths they bring to our learning community. At this time, we'll have approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to remove from the consent agenda? If not, for motion?
Move, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion. At this time, move into the formal annual organizational meeting of the board and appointment of board committees. So as outlined in Coopville School District Policy 1210, the board will elect from its members a chair, president, and a vice chair president to serve one-year terms. Newly appointed board members are not eligible to serve unless the majority of the board has already been appointed. The position of legislative rep, which is being filled by Director Merwin, is elected also at our annual organizational meeting, but this is a two-year term. And Director Merwin was appointed and will, that position will be up for election next year. At this time, I'll call for nominations, the position of chair president to serve during the ensuing year.
Nominate Morgan White, producer, chair for every year. You won't be surprised because he may hear me again, but I think it's really important to see that there are new board members in the next two or three months.
Second.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At this time, we'll do a form poll call vote and I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to serve in this way. So we'll just go down the line. Is there any other nominations for the position before we move to that? Okay, thanks. Alright, so we'll just go down the line and do a roll call vote. Director Merwin?
Aye.
Director Pereira?
Aye.
Director Conard? Thank you. I just will vote too. Thank you. And then, I'm already sitting here, so there's no other assumption of office. And then at this time, we'll move into nominations for the role of vice president to serve during the ensuing year.
Would nominate Nancy Conard to continue in the position of vice president.
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. That's that nomination? Is there any other nominations? Alright, hearing none, we'll move into a roll call vote for that position. Director Merwin? Moving on to the form, the next formal piece of our organizational meeting, which is our subcommittee and subcommittee purpose and terms. So I sent those to you in email and they've also been posted in board docs to see. Is there any potential changes to the purpose and terms that we voted on for the subcommittees last year?
My suggestion would be that given that the term of the standing committee is left a little bit vague, and it's my understanding that Robert's rules says that a standing committee is usually for a specific length of time and often is renewed at an annual meeting at the same time that its members are reappointed. My suggestion would be just to write that into our protocol. If that is the case for all standing committees, that they would be reevaluated at every annual meeting. And then with that change, I think both still seem to serve the same purpose.
I also like that idea in our, in our policy regarding the committee, which is, the committees are formed with a vote of the whole board. And so just in seeing how board turnover has happened or changed, I think in looking at this committee in a long-term way, I think it's good to determine that need annually for that subcommittee and to agree as a team that that's a need going forward for, for the current board that's serving. And so I also like that language change. Any other thoughts like that? We want to formalize that with a motion?
Although the budget and finance subcommittee protocol is, or purpose and terms is not in the current agenda, I suppose I could move to adopt both the policy protocol and the budget and finance purpose and terms for this calendar year.
With the amendment to change the language in the beginning?
My proposal was to make that a board protocol. We've been writing that way and adopted it later.
Okay. Gotcha.
But if anybody else wants to make that amendment.
Yeah. So it has been moved to approve the subcommittee purpose and terms. Is there? It's been moved and seconded to approve the subcommittee purpose and terms for budget and finance and policy and protocol. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to the last of the annual organizational meeting, which is appointments of the subcommittee. And in our policy, those, it says that sub by the chair. And I just want to say, appreciate all the work that's gone into those subcommittees last year. I know I spent a lot of extra time and energy and really with a focus on just communicating around expectations and also refining our process as a team on how we make decisions and how much information we need to make decisions. So I just want to say, appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Our, our purpose and terms for the policy and protocols committee will be on that one. And currently Director Pereira serves on that with me and I would love it if you're willing to continue to do that.
I'll accept that appointment.
Great, thank you. And currently Director Conard and Director Pereira serve on the budget and finance subcommittee. And I would appreciate again if you guys would just continue with the work that's been going this year. Thanks. That concludes our annual organizational meeting portion. We'll move into a regular business meeting for this. Moving on to public comment. Alright, there's no public comment for this evening. Which moves us into recognitions. So the recognition tonight is for Mr. Kelly, who's a CTE teacher. And I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent Leatherwood.
I have a couple of things for the board, one being a certificate that he received and also the recognition that Mr. Lincoln Kelly received for the Coopville School District. So it says, Dear Lincoln Kelly, congratulations to you and all parties in achieving the AED Foundation recognition of Coopville High School. We are pleased that you have been chosen to demonstrate your commitment to academic excellence through your diesel equipment technology and continuous improvement through the AEDF recognition process. AEDF High School recognition signifies to equipment, industry stakeholders that your school has been, has achieved a level of excellence based on meeting secondary school technical standards developed by the AED Foundation. These standards align with the AED Foundation National Post-Secondary Equipment Technology Standards. The term of the recognition is five years, starting from the date shown on the certificate, which is October 29. We are relying on you to maintain the standards on which this status was granted and continue serving students with excellence. One year prior to the expiration of your recognition, we will contact you to begin the renewal process. The AED Foundation is dedicated to developing and improving their equipment industry partnerships that meet the mutual needs of local dealers, manufacturers, and technical school programs. Please let us know how we can be of assistance. We're proud of, to be affiliated with your fine diesel equipment technology and wish your school ongoing success. So with our CTE program, we currently do not have the top grade of the Diesel Mechanic course. This allows us to be able to offer that in the future, which is a huge achievement for creating more top players in our CTE. There's a plaque and a banner as well. The plaque will be hung on the school and the banner also. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Moving on to reports and communication. In our learning spotlight tonight, we're going to hear from the behavior and discipline team who have been working hard all year. And so over to Superintendent Leatherwood.
Wait, I'm going to call up Principal McCall and her team from Coopville Elementary Schools, who are going to go through the process that we've gone through. And then we're going to follow that up with our middle school, high school. I believe Wilbur's here. There he is, front row. Oh my gosh. Wilbur will be following up with the middle school, high school.
I get the privilege tonight of introducing this Kristen Wagner to present on behalf of the elementary school's behavior and discipline team. I'm extremely proud of the work that we've been doing at the district level and then that then feeding through into our elementary school. So we have been working extremely hard and Kristen's going to talk to that and I'll stick around if you have questions.
So our elementary behavior team consists of the following friends. We've got Annie Deposit, who's our title teacher, Brett Casey, third grade, myself, first grade, Eric Locklear, which is our special education teacher, but she's more like TK through third primarily. And then Ms. Littlefield, our school counselor, and then of course, Principal McCall. This is kind of how we've been doing it. We, our elementary school has been following an MTSS protocol for the last couple of years. So that is when we meet with a team as a grade level and start looking at all students. Is it a behavior? Is it academic? How can we help them? What kind of data do we need to be looking at? What kind of practices? Do we need more one-on-one, more small group, that kind of a thing? So our goal is to take that and then introduce it with a PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. So taking a framework that we create and use to support student behaviors along with academics. So that is where we started. And then we meet as a behavior team every other Tuesday and we work together. And then what we work on, we come back and take to our staff. So we're really trying to include them in the whole process where it's not just the five of us coming in and saying, here's what you need to do. It needs to be that buy-in. So we've done a very good job of asking them for their opinions, taking out surveys, and really just having that conversation to see where is the biggest need and how can we make everyone's life easier? We also have been working together to create the expectations based on like per grade level and then a discipline matrix. So how do we handle certain situations? And that's been shared with students through our leadership club. It's been shared with parents and guardians. Did you share it with everybody or just that's not? No, after break. They'll get to see it after break. Sorry. And the community. And we've kind of been looking at other matrices that have been going on through other school districts. So instead of us starting from scratch, we are going through a program that Centrelia and OSPI have created and they have a really great framework that goes from kindergarten through fifth grade. So our TK program is just going to kind of go with kindergarten right now. And we're going to be kind of beta testing it to see how it fits our community and then where we need to tweak it for next year. After doing some talks with our fee, our staff, this is our main three themes that we were having a hard time with. Like that was kind of a reoccurring theme. Motivation and student buy-in. How do we get students engaged and having that internal motivations? How are we going to create that buy-in for apathetic students? Finding the right balance, so reward-based and motivation, not so punitive, a lot of proactive. Supporting students in internalizing the benefits of their positive behavior and helping them develop genuine desire to engage in their own work. Our second big theme was consequence management. How, what's the appropriate use and timing of consequences? Concerns about our students getting away with oppositional behavior. Need for clarity in our office referral protocols. And we had a high interest in exploring new consequence options. So what we're currently been using isn't really working, so we're trying to find just a different process. And then just guidelines for how do we get parents involved? How can we all be on the same page? And our last big theme was skill building and support systems. We, staff was addressing age inappropriate behaviors through class-wide skill building, creating cohesive approaches to sensory tool usage, developing a reentry procedure. So if a student is removed, how do we get them back in to where the whole class is? They're ready to go, but the teacher's also ready to go and the other students are ready. Supporting each other, our colleagues with all those challenging behaviors and managing a space for students who need some sort of break. Not always easy to do in a classroom, so finding a way to do that. Some of our current successful strategies that we really tried to hear what's working and incorporating that into our current new models. Lots of proactive approaches, very clear and consistent expectations where we're practicing, 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 all the time. Very explicit with our routines and just consistent communication. We do a lot of call and response and just being consistent with what you're asking from AM to PM, from Monday to Friday and everything. Some of our individual support strategies that have been successful. Lots of positive reinforcements, so individual goal setting, some types of rewards, sticker charts, ticket systems, our pawpats. We've now started doing a student of the month that's focusing on a key character trait that we're focused, that Ms. Littlefield teaches in our lessons of second step and purposeful people. Thank you. And like the month of December is empathy, so we're looking at that key character trait. And just trying to recognize all of that positive behavior. Instead of focusing on that negative, really focusing on the positive. And then de-escalation techniques, so allowing breaks, individual conferences, strategic disengagement, and then just teaching them self-monitoring skills. They don't, they can't do it if we don't teach them how to come down. Last slide, please. And so our last couple of steps, we're in the process of finalizing our pause promise. So we at the elementary school have always had the way of the wolf and the way of the wolf is leaving us. But we've kind of made it a little more fun. So instead of the way of the wolf, we're going to have the pause promise. So the P is for polite, A is act responsibly, our W is going to be work together and our S will stand for safe. So it's a lot of the same things of way of the, the way of the wolf, but in a much easier way to remember. So we've got some materials that are going to come out after winter break and posters. We have a song that the leadership club has been working on and has recorded for us. So we'll be getting to sing that after the pledge every day and getting the whole building. I'm really excited to sing. Every single day. When we come back, January 6th through 10th, we're going to be doing a whole school-wide practice of our expectations and everyone's going to get on board. It's not going to be here or there. And then we'll be evaluating, we're going to be asking staff all the time, how is it working? Where do we need to improve? What do we need to change so that it's an ongoing changing process? And of course, we're going to celebrate as much as we can. I think we have a Friday assembly right when we get back, celebrating and sharing all of the wins of the week. That is what's happening in our neck of the foot. Wait, any questions?
Any question?
Really love that we've been hearing about this and now it's really rolling out and I love hearing about the progress. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, yeah. Plus the Christmas sweaters are on point tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wilbur Purdue and I'm a teacher at CMS. I'm speaking tonight as a representative of both the CMS and CHS Building Leadership Team and the district's discipline team. I saw that the elementary stated who was on their team and for the district discipline team, I believe it's Casey Greve, myself, Cassidy Patno, Principal Capus, and Vice Principal Allison Kandiff for the secondary. Tonight, I'm here to present the current work that has been done by both teams regarding behavioral instruction and disciplinary responses. So two different areas. Next, please. In the pillars, the district strategic plan lays out that the pillars support our district's mission, provide an educational foundation that allows every student to reach their potential. Work that is currently being done is direct, directly buffering, ensuring excellent instruction and promoting student and staff well-being, though all of the pillars are directly impacted by the quality of our educational environment. Next, please. And next, please. CMS and CHS have had a significant amount of behind-the-scenes work being completed by the building leadership team. Our team is comprised of Principal Capus, Vice Principal Kandiff, Katia Williford, Alex Reed, Cassidy Patno, Kyle Nelson, Catherine Berg, Kate Pilsma, and myself. Middle school has been working on PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, which is a set of tools schools use to improve student behavior and academics. A sample of one identified area on our behavior matrix is the classroom. You can see that up on the board. On the left, it says prepared, accountable, cooperative, and kind. And on the previous slide, it said pack. And so we're taking a look at changing our safe, responsible, respectful acronym to pack now. And everything that you would expect to see in a classroom would fit into those four categories. Should I pause for notes? Okay. So for instance, one of the things that has changed with this work is we started taking a look again at what we've done in the past. And for instance, coming out of COVID, we realized that our students didn't know how to watch a performance. And what are our expectations in the pack? What, how are they different than our expectations in a basketball game? And reteaching those skills to our students is a focus now. And so taking a look at not only what's going on in places like a physical location like a classroom, but what do we need to teach our students in situational areas, like a dramatic performance or a basketball game? Staff in the middle school are currently completing posters that will be installed around the campus and students will be taught behaviors as well. Next, please. Similarly to the middle school, the high school has also been completing posters and determining how they will launch these expectations to students. They're also using the PAC acronym so that it's consistent across both campuses. And they were looking at how they can take expectations from the middle school level and advance those to a higher level for the high school. Next, please. On a concurrently with the behavior matrix work that we've done, the district's discipline teams, middle and high school representatives, work together to meld WASDAS Form 3241 F1 and F2 together into a cohesive document to allow for equitable, clear, and well-defined discipline responses to behaviors. This work also supported by CEA and was reviewed. As per bargaining, this will be reviewed and revised as needed. So staff will be able to monitor effectiveness throughout the year. That was something that was stated in the last bargain that we would review that. The district discipline team is comprised of staff representatives from CES, CMS, CHS administration, and we even have a community member. Casey Greve married all of the textual descriptions to the level matrices that we have in our work. And this was no small feat. And I worked on adding all of the end notes to the correct locations. Reading the footnotes and laws assigned to each part of this really helped me realize how comprehensive and supportive this tool will be in our future. I had no idea of the details that exist in law between age levels and protections that exist with special education and other rights. And it was really interesting to read through that. Reading carefully also illustrates that this document requires constant review and adjustment for our specific school needs. And there are very specific locations in there that ask us to do that, to be diligent about what we're doing in regards to behavior. Staff should identify and note instances where this document needs to be modified for district needs. And if appropriate, I don't know if this is board procedure or not, an annual date might, should, might want to be set to see if it can be reviewed. Next, please. And our next steps, the first one is instruction of the behavior matrix. We're looking at how we can move forward with teaching our students our expectations, whether that's dedicated time during tutorial where we can focus on each day teaching a lesson or whether it's assemblies, what will be most appropriate for our students. The second is to recognize students who are following expectations. And the third is reteaching those students when students are not following expectations. And so we've done quite a bit of work so far in a short amount of time. And because we've established these building leadership teams and the district discipline team, it's given us the ability to focus those resources and to, to move forward in a concentrated way. So I wanted to say thank you for that opportunity. Do you have any questions for me?
I love the acronyms. I, I think picking complicated things and making them simple for both the teams is such a win. I mean, to just be able to clearly communicate expectations. I know we've heard about this process. this process. And so it's exciting to see the work that's going on at both of the schools. And we just appreciate the collaboration and energy and efforts. You know, it takes time. So, thanks.
And one fun thing is that Superintendent Leatherwood has a huge collection of past experiences and videos and things like that that she shared with us in those meetings. And I look forward to getting to make some of those videos. That looks quite fun for staff to make. So, thank you.
I can't wait. Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item in Reports and Communication is Administrator Report. And I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent.
Can you hear me okay? So Patty Camille was not able to attend. She had an emergency yesterday that she had to attend to. So I'll be presenting hers, her report tonight for isolation, restraint and uses of reasonable force. This falls under promoting student well and staff well-being. One, students, when they're having an escalation, making sure that they're safe, but also our staff are equally as safe in that. Also, it falls under managing resources and ensuring that we're connecting with the families in a timely manner. I'm going to go over the laws and regulations for this particular piece. And it is part of our policy that we review it each year. So Washington Administrative Code and definitions, the current law, we put up there under the RCW. There's two RCWs that talk about isolation and restraint and talk specifically when it's permitted and when it's not. And under these two laws, the following provision applies to all students, whether they are special needs students or not. All students are gen ed students, but if there's a safety issue by law, how can we proceed? So they say the following, use of restraint and isolation is permitted only when reasonably necessary to control spontaneous behavior that poses an imminent likelihood of serious harm. So the laws have changed and there's continued legislation around this, this particular topic. So it's something to always keep at the front and we'll always have a report on either how those have changed or adjustments that have been made. So definition under Washington Administrative Code is around restraint. What is restraint considered? It's any physical intervention or force used to control a student, including the use of a restraint device to restrict the student's freedom of movement. In this case, isolation is defined as follows under Washington Administrative Code, restricting the student alone with a within a room or any other form of enclosure from which the student may not leave. Or imminent, under the definition, being likely to happen at any moment rather than farther away in the future. And then finally, likelihood of serious harm, a substantial risk that physical harm will be inflicted by a person upon themselves or another person. So reporting is very specific under these laws. The reporting expectations if a restraint or isolation are used, the principal or designee will verbally inform the student's parent or guardian of the incident within 24 hours of the incident. Paperwork will then be sent to families within five days of incident. And that's per the RCWs that you saw in previous slides. Also, the principal or designee will review the incident with the staff, person or persons who involve, who were involved to discuss whether proper procedures were followed. And I'll give some examples of that in a moment. Any school employee who utilizes these during school-sponsored instruction or activities will inform the building administrator or designee as soon as possible and submit an incident report to the district office within two business days. All of those are under the guidelines of the RCWs. On number two, where it's talking about discussing whether proper procedures were followed, there are cases when there's imminent danger and somebody needs to prevent a student, let's just say, from running into a street or running in front of a, like if a bus is coming, things like that. And so when that occurs, there's always that that conversation afterwards. And I will say, most of the time, you're, you're holding back the student from preventing, you know, imminent harm. And so those are instances where you can have that discussion. But in the case of most cases, you want to stay away from joints and things like that. So if there are like those joints, you're, you're talking about that, but you also go with, yeah, save the student over imminent harm, right? So a lot of times it's just the conversation. For our district, in 2324 school year, we had fewer than five incidents and less than 1% of the student population involved in these incidents that were reported to OSBI. And then this year so far, we have seven incidents and less than 1% of student population involved in incidents. And so this year, we have had an increase, but we also have been very diligent and tracking that. And many of those are same students. So because there's seven incidents doesn't mean it's seven different students. Sometimes it can be the same student seven times. Correct. Yeah. We report it each year to the state. So annual training, we provide, in this district, we provide annual training to our special education teachers and all of our paraprofessionals. And we use what's called right response for our training, which is a training that for renewals of certificates, it's typically eight hours, but for initial training, it's 16 hours. If, if employees let that lapse, they have to do the full training again. And so it's really important to keep those annual trainings up to speed. We also ensure that we do that in August and we also offer follow-ups during our conference, parent teacher conference times. And then why? Because we want to ensure, right response is all about preventative, so being proactive. And we're talking about positive behavior intervention and support. That's about being preventative and proactive. And this is the same thing. So primarily, the training's not about how to restrain a kid, it's how to prevent incidents and how to de-escalate situations. And so that's why we provide this training for staff.
Just curious, why don't teachers?
So that's something that we're looking at. In many districts, there are clock hour offerings for teachers to take the trainings as well and get provided that training and opportunity everywhere. Also, in many districts, administrators get that training as well on a yearly basis. So we are, we are looking into that and we are, we are looking into that as a leadership team. And my hope would be that would be a recommendation in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I really appreciate having this presentation. This is very interesting and important, I think. And I would like that there's some do of it that we both prevented tonight. I don't think you can emphasize any of this. Really great having the presentation.
All right. Moving on to Business Manager Report, Mr. Giannello, turn that to you.
Thank you. What I have here is the financial report for December based on November financials. It is a new format. So this is what we've been working on for a while. New format.
Wait, before you start, Brandon, there's a couple updated versions. So just tell me which one you're operating off of.
Yeah, speaking of which, go with the one, well, there's the one that says meeting presentation. Cause I guess I'll get, since this is a new format. Yeah. Because, yeah, I guess I'll preface it with there, there's more information than the other one. There's like 40 slides, but we're not going to do 40 slides every month. So what we're going to be doing is select, taking a selection of slides from that master presentation that has a larger amount of slides. And I'll start labeling it. I think I put in there, meeting presentation is the difference in there. That'll be what we'll present, the slides will present on. So we, you know, about half did. And we'll vary the slides, I think, month to month, based on, on timing, what's pertinent. So yeah, for everybody too out there to know, if you want more information, you can look at the 40 slide presentation. But for now, we'll just go through 20 of them. This is all in regard, related to the strategic, strategic plan, pillar one, managing resources effectively. So what we're going to do is we're going to start with the enrollment report section. And this is including December count data. This is showing the different categories of enrollment. It shows budget column. And then based on the average, again, based on data through December count data, it come up with an average for all the different categories. And ultimately what this is showing is that we're above what we budgeted for in all the categories, aside from the one Ale. You'll notice we're a little down on that one. But overall, we're still above what we budgeted for, which is good news. And go to the next slide. This then charts the data. So the basis, the premise really behind this new format of board report and data that we've been looking at is we're going to look for patterns. We're going to look past year data. It's really a trend analysis to see how we're doing and how we're on pace. So the 2425 actual enrollment is the one at the top there, the blue, kind of comes out with blue with the red dots and the black dash in there. And that is showing where we're actually coming out with enrollment counts. The line at the bottom there, that green line, if you're following, that's what we budgeted. So this just kind of gives you a visual. We are above what we budgeted for currently. And then those colors in between are just past years and where they enrollment. Go ahead.
Do you actually budget by the month?
No, we don't budget by the month. We buy, by the year, but these are broken out by month. Yeah.
Does it based on the trend line from before? So it ends up budgeting monthly to show or align with that trend line?
Yeah, exactly. That top one's based on a trend. We'll wind up and then we'll fill in that, see how we did. So that was, that was it for the enrollment right now. We'll probably go into some enrollment a little bit more in January. So we'll move into the financial reporting section. And this is based on financial reports as of November 30. We're about a quarter of the way through the year financially. And that's what that 25% is showing there in the top left gauge. Revenue to date is a, we collected about 25% year to date. And then our expenditures are about 25%. So that's what we expect to see quarter of the way through. And then you can see some trend lines based on cash flow and our fund balance. And we'll go into those here in a little bit more in detail. But this is a nice graph to give you a quick look at our financial summary by month. Additionally, at this time, remember, we did budget for capacity this year. At this time, we have not used any of our budget capacity. There'll be a slide for this. So here we'll look a little closer at that cash flow trends. The line at the top is where we are at 2425. But you'll notice we're still following the way cash is handled here. The interesting thing about this is that red line, remember last year, we had to do those interfund loan transfers. If we did not do the interfund loan transfers, that's what that red line is showing. You'll notice we would have had some issues in certain months. The blue line is last year, including the interfund loan transfers. But right now, the 2425, we're following that same trend line.
So are we in a position of nervousness for December, following the trend line of?
No, no, the other document, actually, you can reference, these are going to give you a high level look at the graphs, but we do have that cash flow out there. And you look at that, honestly, I think it's June is the month that I have my eye on currently. So we're, we're okay till June in my mind.
Okay.
If you look at the first three dots on there, you're showing, we're showing that we're above that blue trend line. So it's going to show that we're, if we follow this trend line, we're going to end up in June, still above that blue unless there's unexpected.
Yeah, there's things to come. Actually, one of the things that'll impact this maybe sooner than June, too, that we'll, we'll take a look at is we'll have to transfer for the last non-voted debt payment. So we have a large sum. But again, that won't come until February, March time.
Is there a portion low in December, January, February? Like, why is that?
We'll get there. I'm going to say that.
All right.
We picked the slide.
Remember, had a similar question. So we'll get there. No, it's great. Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that. So go ahead to the next slide. This is a look at the cash flow. Again, so that was cash basis or those cash basis reports. Same, you'll see the same thing on the fund balance. This is now fund balance tracking by month. You'll see it's sort of that same trend.
And so you see where there are the concerning dates or there can be the concerning dates if you look at the gap between the current fund balance and the previous.
Go ahead to the next slide. Here, now we're getting into your, your question a little bit more. Now we're going to look at revenues and expenditures. This is going to show you the actual dollars of revenues coming in. What has a lot to do with how revenues come in and cash flow issues is because of our top two revenue sources, which is local levy dollars. And they don't come in evenly throughout the year. It is October and April are the high collection months for levies. And then state apportionment is the number, is the highest revenue source that we have. And you, again, not until the end of the year in July, August is the high collection revenue months for state apportionment. November and April are the two lowest months for state apportionment. So you can kind of see that here as you analyze some of the revenues, how they come in. And then go ahead to the next slide. This really gives you a visual look at exactly that question that you were asking. Gosh, why is it so spiky? You know, high in October, we have a lot of revenue. High, we have a lot of revenue in April, but then gosh, in November and May, we're really dipping down low. And it has to do with exactly those, the way the revenue comes in through state apportionment and/or local levy collections. So go ahead to the next slide. Oh, the revenue side. Now we'll take a look at expenditures. Again, this is going to show your expenditures. We're doing a trend analysis. You can kind of compare each month's our expenditures one to the other. But really, go ahead to the next slide. This gives you a visual look. You'll notice when we're thinking back to the, how spiky the revenues were, notice the expenditures stay pretty, pretty flat for the most part. So there's where fund balance kind of gets you through those low dips. The black line at the top were expenditures by month we're following. And then it plots it by years. 20, you know, some of those lower years, like 2020, 2021, expenditures were much lower. Somewhere mixed in there, you do have some COVID years, but you can still see the, the general trend is still there in terms of expenditures by month. Okay, next slide. We're going to dive into the expenditures a little bit more. So these are the different categories of expenses, salaries and benefits. And then I consider everything else supplies through capital outlay. You'll hear us refer to that as MSOCs. And then I consider everything else supplies through capital outlay. You'll hear us refer to that as MSoCs. You'll notice salary and benefits are the higher dollar amounts of expenditures. Then down below, it'll actually break it out, looking at our average monthly total expenditures. And then our average monthly payroll too is an interesting figure on there, about one point three million a month is what we do. Payroll. Salary and benefits.
May I ask, Brian? Is this slide through November?
You got it. Yep, exactly. Based on November payroll. Yes, November financials. Correct.
But it's year to date through.
But it's year to date through. Correct. So go ahead to the next slide. Again, this is going to show you a graph format of the data we just looked at, breaking out the different expenditure categories. And it just really highlights the fact that our MSoCs or those supplies and services are a small portion of the budget that we operate with. It's about eighty-four percent related to salaries and benefits. So. This one might be somewhat redundant. Those you don't like a pie chart, you can kind of see the same thing on a graph, a bar chart here where the different categories of certificated salaries, classified salaries, and again, the MSoCs are very low in comparison to salary and benefit. Lot of information on here, but this is actually a really good report. I think we've been looking for for a while. Finally, got a good version of this working now that where we can get it out of the software and description. So these are expenditures broken out by program. So before we're kind of looking at by object code. This is just going to give you expenditures by month with the year to date totals broken out by program.
Are you having more confidence in the encumbrances? Because I know that that was not working.
Um, yeah. Yeah, more more confidence, still work in progress. I think we have a majority of things encumbered on the salary benefit side. There's still a small percentage that we're looking into with the software. I think we're going to get there in the next couple of months, soon. Encumbering some of those outstanding staff with the new software, but mu- much further along than when I came here, when we first came here. So we're we're getting there.
So with that said, that really means that the totals are understated here with the encumbrances for not that.
Uh, yes, slightly, slightly. Yeah. I don't know exactly what the the percentages. If I had to guess, I'd say about for solid. We missed a little bit on the MSoC side, too. We really do encumber like insurances, utilities on that side. Are there some MSoC encumbrances we're missing? Yeah, maybe that things come up, but as you saw with the bigger charts, the bigger concern is salary and benefits. If I had to guess, I think we're encumbering about ninety to ninety-five percent. Salary and benefits accurately, we're still missing probably about four percent. And we're working on in the software how to how to get that showing more accurately. Think we'll get there. But yeah, that's something to consider. Go ahead to the next slide. This just gives you a good look at our unreserved fund balance. Now, this is by month. So this is kind of that top part is our do have a fund balance of roughly three hundred eighty-four thousand for the month. This calculation showing our annual expenditure budget, daily average expenditures. And to relate that into into terms, what that really means is how long could we last? If something happens, if everything stopped right now, we could basically survive for seven days based on our average daily expenditures with that unreserved fund balance. So that that's the slide will be ongoing. Of course, fund balance is going to change monthly, but you'll notice this is kind of the talks we've been having, the importance of the fund balance and what we're trying to.
I want to add to that just a little bit. As we present this each month, our hope is that we'll we'll see that number rise, that that's always the hope, but also as we start to look at what our policy is around fund balance, and we might want to consider a higher policy because we're a smaller district, we want to look at this being more substantial so that we would not be even at six percent, if we were to look at six percent, which is current policy, that would not get us very far through the month. No.
Go to the next slide. This was just a high level recap look because there are other funds. We spent a lot of time on general fund, but I want to make sure we have at least a high level slide in here, the different funds, capital projects, debt service, ASB and transportation vehicle fund. This gives you a high look at the beginning of fund balance, revenues, expenditures year to date, and the ending of fund balance for each of those funds. That other slide that that's out there, the other presentation will expand on that if you're interested to look at more detail of these funds. And again, in certain months, we're pertinent, we'll probably select and, you know, spend more time in one area or the other. That gives you I believe that's it. Side. Yes, that is it. Good. Any questions? I should add any question slide in there. Again, some of the stuff that I'm catching some of the typos, too. If you're looking in terms of some of the programs on there, I think like transitional kindergarten is one that I've catch. I thought, but I haven't updated yet. If you guys do catch anything like that, we'll kind of tidy up the spelling on programs and things like that.
Just I appreciate the updated reports. I for me, it's so important to have historical context to the numbers that we look at every month to be able to see trends in our data and in our in our numbers so that we can continue to monitor, which is our role to monitor. And so having tools to monitor our current spending is so important. And so I appreciate the updated reports and the effort that went into preparing these. I just, I think it's so important for us to know where we are and make corrections earlier rather than later. So. Any other questions or comments? No. Okay. Moving on to superintendent report. Can I let him?
Thank you. So from last month to this month, I just have a few things to go over. One being just around our strategic plan and the movement that we're making in our strategic plan. You heard a great resemblance of how we're digging into the work and to really move towards, you know, every student in their future. And we're continuing to do so as a as a team and as a as a district. That being said, said tonight was really about promoting student safety and well-being and connecting to the families and community. I'm arguing to the next slide. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. So we're really looking at pillar three and pillar five tonight. And on the next slide, you'll notice that for the first time, we participated, our entire transportation team participated in the greening of Coopville. And I will tell you, that bus was amazing, and we had kids on there. We had the entire team on there and they decorated it and Coopville did a great job. Coopville School District did a great job representing this year, and we'll continue to represent in the future. I was very proud of the team coming together, and it was kind of a last a chance effort and our supervisor, Mr. Wallace, came to me and said, is this doable? Absolutely. Let's get it. Get it out there. And they did a fabulous job. So I want to thank the entire transportation department for being there and representing our district. It was. It was amazing. As well, on the next slide, you'll notice that we had our Glee Club present at our Christmas event, and it was well attended. Our kids did an amazing job and again, another night for the community to come together and celebrate. And these are just a couple. And then we also had an outside group, the Saratoga Orchestra on the next slide. It was a community event and very well attended, you can see in our cafeteria area. And they also sent a letter of thanks and wanted to ensure that we thanked specific people in particular. Betty Hines, who is our custodian at the high school, and they really appreciated her support during the event. As you can see, it was well attended. Sherry Benachi, who helped them organize the event, ensure ensure it went off with a just great support around that. And then finally, Pete Gedpart, who was our is our custodian lead and helped to organize and ensure everything was set up and ready to go. So as you can see, that was another great community event here in Coopville. Just a couple others on the next slide. I had the opportunity to go down to our elementary school last week and present to our student leaders on what I believe student or what leadership is about. We talked a lot about, you know, as a as a student coming in and providing support for one another, but also it doesn't mean that you need to be the one that's the most outgoing. And you could be shy. You, there's different ways to lead and how we present and how we come into our own and grow throughout our lives is really important. And so I want to thank John and Ryan for asking me to be there, but also I was highly impressed that at eight o'clock in the morning before school starts, there was I'm not even sure thirty-five to forty students there, and that was just highly impressive. As you know, we we worked this week during our early release time. All of our teachers district wide were continuing the work on our discipline matrix and our PBIS systems in one fashion or another. And then finally, just putting it out there to our that we're going to start our budget committee starting in January. We already have ten people who have responded to the newsletter who would like to be on that committee. And we're hoping to have many more who are on that committee, and we're going to be starting the first week on Wednesday from five to six thirty for that meeting, and then we'll continue to meet on Wednesdays. And I'll be putting that out to to the people who sign up for that committee. So it's been a great few, well, several weeks since we had our our last meeting and we're doing great things there.
Thank you. Any questions for? Okay, moving on to board member reports. Start with you, Director Merwin.
We're going to do our WADA.
If you don't mind, that'd be super.
Oh, I think each of us is going to say a little bit about the WADA convention that we attended and what we got out of it. I had the opportunity to sit with some student school board members from various districts. And I guess what I took away was there's some very impressive students that are on school boards as the student members, and I'm sure we have those here in Coopville. And I I remember we had student school board members in the past, but I'm realizing we didn't take advantage of them. That's maybe not it. We didn't use them to the we didn't. We didn't get the most out of them that we should have been getting because we weren't giving them the opportunities that we need to give them. And I know the board, we are in discussion about having school board members, and this I was I was okay with it before this. I thought that was something we should do, but now I'm much more enthusiastic about. That's a program we should we should get in. I do have a little bit as the legislative rep to superintendent Leatherwood and I have met with both Representative Dave Paul and Representative Clyde Shavers in the last few weeks. And both of those visits were very good, very positive. And we that our legislators have heard a lot about the big three that are being pushed by the various organizations that we need more money for special education. We need more money for transportation. We need more money for supplies, MSoCs. So we didn't have to talk with it too much about that. We were able to get into a little bit about some Coopville specific things. And they were. They were quite receptive to seeing what they could do to help us. Representative Shavers actually came down here to take a tour of the district. And that was that was a really good exchange. He warned us ahead of time that he asked a lot of questions and and he followed through. And I will say that he asked very good questions and very knowledgeable questions. I was very impressed about. He knows a lot about what's going on. He is the vice chair of the Education Committee, and he now is on the Health Committee also. And he already is quite knowledgeable in that area, and he he had some good things to say about need for mental health. I think that's going to be a strong issue that he's pushing. He also he, you know, I'm realizing a legislator, they they pass laws, but also they kind of help money get funneled around. He's interested in seeing what he can do, and he had a couple of things that we're going to follow up on, and maybe he could help us with some funding for various things needs that we have. We also spoke to him. We actually took him to the juvenile detention center here because there is a an issue about who's going to be running the juvenile detention centers moving forward that the legislator is looking at. Looks like Coopville does a great job of running the juvenile detention center, but because it it's it's fell to us because the juvenile detention center is in the Coopville School District. However, in other places, most other places, I would say, it actually the Educational Service District runs it. Well, we like, we like running it. We think we do a good job. I think it's best for the students. So both Representative Paul and Representative Shavers are are aware that we would like to keep it and are really hopeful that some way can be found that we can do it because the the movement right now is they're thinking about having the ESD run all the centers, and we would like to not have that happen. So I just want to say that we are being in contact with our representatives and hopefully they offered that we may quickly, oh, Superintendent Leatherwood is just dropping names with Representative Shavers, people I don't. Oh, yeah. Well, she and I did this and Representative, he's saying, well, I sit next to her. Yeah, yeah, I know her. So it was. He was.
We're getting them to talk to her so that he can leverage money for Coopville.
So. So that.
I got an email from Melissa Raffbone about alleged network. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you both for working on that so much. Any questions for Director Merwin?
Oh, I want to give a shout out to Casey Gravey because I went to the Glee Club. And I really appreciate her taking that on. That isn't what she was hired to do here. The students obviously love her and are getting a lot out of it. It was a and I also was impressed. Somebody mentioned it. I told my wife, yeah, we don't need to get there very early. It's not going to be a problem to get the seat. I've been to concerts and plays here, and there's always. No, it was. It was pretty crowded. We had to kind of push our way in there. So it was a great.
Director Ferrera? Yeah, well, for a WADA update, I'm so grateful that our our board can take that time to sort of immerse ourselves in that continuing education and that ongoing news improvement of how we can function as a board and learn so much. A few of the sessions that I attended that were really that I attended that were really interesting, as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, I was kind of drawn to some of the ones that were about the roles of superintendents and finance directors and boards, and where we can all find our place and really help support financial stability in our districts. I came away with lots of great information about transparency, communication, and the way that everybody can make things super clear, both to ourselves and of course, to the community. And so to that end, again, thanks, Brian, for updating those reports, and I'm really looking forward to, as a committee, continuing to make progress in that way and bring some of those ideas to our board. And I attended a session for the school board student leadership, which was amazing and chock-full of very engaged, very eloquent student leaders and directors that brought out the best in them and helped encourage their confidence in their own voice. And I'm really looking forward to being able to make that opportunity happen here in Coopville. I'm excited that we're on that path. And yeah, some of the keynote speeches were really interesting. I reference the conversation about generations and the difference between Boomers and Millennials and Gen X, like, almost daily now. Really funny to look at everything through that lens. So it was a really good time, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Questions? Director Conan?
Yeah, I, so, policy protocol. We, I feel like we have the next grouping of protocols ready to look at, which is around communication. And so I think hopefully at a workshop, we can bring that forward. We're kind of thinking through the next step of that, which is governance, which we have kind of hit, we've, we've hit a little pause on it, but I feel like communication is ready for a first look from our team, which includes, you know, kind of our processes around, you know, public comment and all, all of those things. So that'll be great to look at during the workshop. And we also met to talk briefly about policy. You'll see one policy on here, which we didn't have a chance to bring to a workshop, but it can definitely be a workshop before second reading. So this gives us an opportunity for first reading and then further conversation, hopefully in January. And then conference, for me, I would just say, it was a great opportunity to kind of know our team more and the people that we're working with. It's always so helpful to learn from other school districts. You know, we're not reinventing the wheel and doing things for the first time, and people have been through what we are going. And it's just such a, it's a really helpful opportunity. One of the sessions that I attended was with Battleground School District, and I really enjoyed it. So they're, they kind of did a book study on the book about coherence. They used three different books with different levels of their team. So with their board team, with their leadership team, and then with the, with their staff team. But they define coherence, the heart of coherence is a shared depth of understanding about the purpose and nature of the work, in the minds and the actions individually and especially collectively. And so this year, you know, we have strategic plan on our goal, have that on your goal. And I think that we, we talk about it a lot. You know, we have like a framework of the things that we feel like are really important and valuable to our mission and vision. But we, but we still have some more work and some more grinding to do, and hopefully, like with the street, you know, that we can kind of dig into that some more. They really went into, like, their strategic plan outlines a shared purpose, a specific means of implementing that purpose, and then those measurable outcomes. And it's really, you know, not feeling like your work, behavior team, discipline team is an initiative, but it's really meaningful to us preparing our students for their future and finding that depth of meaning in all of those, in all of those tasks and all of that work. And so it was just so, it was cool, the way, and they're, they're a big, you know, it was just cool the way that they brought that together. And so hopefully, we can kind of continue to build that clarity and depth around our purpose and kind of the nature of that mission and vision with what people said was important to them. And so I just kind of keep clinging to it, rolling around in my mind. I've been making spreadsheets, and you know, I'm like, what about this and this? And just kind of processing, I think that's always the process with leadership, is processing, not just- How do we make this? So it was great. I appreciate serving with each of you and find you very dedicated professionals, and I'm just grateful for this community and district, and it was a good, it was a good opportunity for me. Moving into correspondence, there is a note from Mr. Ebersol, I think you know, which was very kind. I hope he enjoyed his Disneyland trip.
And I'll pass that around at the end as well.
And that's all of our reports and communication. So we do not have any old business on the agenda tonight. We do, again, have one item for new business. As I mentioned, our regular practice is that policies will come to the board for a workshop. Again, this can still come to a workshop, but this is the first reading. So the numbering of this policy does align with WASDA numbering, but I will tell you that the content isn't exactly like the WASDA model policy. The WASDA model policy was pretty simple, and I requested that we keep some of the language in the policy around timeframes of the calendar committee. That's currently meeting. And so I think, again, it's that clear is kind, why that language within this policy should stay, just so that the expectations around that committee are clear, the timing, when that comes to the board, when that gets finalized. Is there any questions about that? Any comments? Allison, did you want to add anything? Does change the language around the use of waiver days and how those can be used, and that does give a little more discretion to policy committees?
Yeah, the waiver days, in particular, there are choices other that, in addition to parent teacher conferences. So we wanted to leave it more open, so that if the staff decided that we wanted to go to a different waiver or reply for a different waiver, the policy matches that.
Any other, yeah? Are you prepared for a motion?
I move that we approve for first reading, school district policy 2220.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve first reading of policy 2220, which is a renumbering of CSD policy 2210. Any debates?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, the board's going to recess to executive session for the purpose of reviewing the performance of a public employee. Just as a reminder, our public employee is Superintendent Leatherwood, and so this is an opportunity to- I, do you think an hour? What's 30 minutes? 45 minutes?
I'm gonna say start with somewhere around-
45 minutes. So, let's see, it's 7:53. Oh, sorry, I can read. Thanks. 6:53. So 7:40? 7:35. How about that? Okay, so at 7:35, so we're going to ask people to clear the room at 7:35. If we're still going, if you would like to remain outside, you are welcome to. We will come out and tell you if it's done. There will be no action taken after the executive session, and the meeting will be adjourned after that. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
...
Our executive session is still going and will continue until 7:55. If we go beyond that, I'll give you another notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Coopville School District meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for your patience.